Hello my friends, this is part two of the June 18th 2024 PYLUSD School Board Review. In this episode, I'm going to be featuring Misty Jansen and the horrors of the old PYLUSD administration and trustees, and the reasons why we don't want to go back there. Hello, this is Andy coming to you from Yorba Linda, California, and I'm going to do my very best to keep this as short as possible, but what I want to urge you to do is to watch this entire video. I know there's some of you that ask me on occasion, "Can you make sure your videos are a little bit shorter? I don't have time to watch the whole thing." This one, you're going to want to watch the whole thing, whether you need to watch it in parts or all together. Please watch the entire program, because I'm going to be tying what it is that Misty Jansen and Trish Quintero and Marilyn Anderson and Carrie Buck, what it is they want to do. They want to go back to the way things used to be, where CRT was being introduced and DEI and SEL and all these types of programs which have nothing to do with education. It destroys education. And why does they want to go back there? Because they are part of the cabal of the NEA, the CTA and the APLE, which are teachers' unions. And why we don't want to go back there? And I'm going to start with a video of Misty Jansen's comment at the last school board meeting. And this is why I included everything else in this review, because it all is connected. And I want to make sure and dedicate some time to this one particular issue. So here's Misty Jansen at the last school board meeting during public comment.
Good evening, President Blades, Board Trustees, Dr. Chernus and Executive Members. I'm Misty Jansen, and I'm here to express my deep concern regarding the mismanagement of personnel and the fiscal irresponsibility displayed by the Board majority as of late. As a concerned member of this community, I find it unacceptable that such irresponsibility is allowed to persist without recourse. It undermines the integrity of our district and it casts doubt on your ability to manage our schools. On behalf of the families in this district, we're asking you to be wise enough to seek counsel when you've made decisions outside of your scope and that are not in the best interest of our students and our district. Please pause to recalibrate and ensure that your mission is aligned with those you've promised to serve. Except maybe that's exactly what you're doing. I guess the question is, who have you promised to serve? I'll save the toilet papering and advice for another day. And instead conclude with this. We want you to choose parents over politics and to choose our kids over your future political careers.
So this is a typical progressive or liberal tactic, and that is to say phrases and speaking points that are completely untrue, but if you say them, they believe. If you say them often enough and enough people repeat them, they will eventually at least appear to be true. They won't become true, but they will appear to be true. And that is what Misty Jansen is doing here. There's a bit of laughter, and I've watched this a few times. I cannot quite figure out what's so funny about something about toilet paper is, but everything else she repeatedly said, you know, that they weren't doing their, they weren't upholding their responsibility, that they weren't seeking proper counsel, which is entirely untrue. There is, you have eight of the people. The other two, which is Carrie Buck and Marilyn Anderson, are completely incompetent. And how Carrie Buck has been in that position for as long as she has, I have no idea. But you have the other eight, the Executive Board and the three conservatives or the majority, who are following every aspect of the district policy, the state Board of Education policy. They're running it by attorneys. They are making sure that the budgets are followed and the money that is slated for specific programs is going to those specific programs. And if you don't think that those eight people do not know that if they did not do all of that, that they would be recalled or fired or what have you, then you are crazy. So you know that probably more than any other Executive Board and trustee, that everything is being followed to the nth degree. Every I is being dotted and T being crossed. And what she's saying, she has no proof of any of that. None of that is happening, and it's just sheer lunacy. This is probably her too, Yogi Bear. You have a group of furries out there, the polar bears and the koala bears, the yogi bears and what have you. I believe this may be Misty Jansen. If not, it's probably one of the other four or five people that we see on a regular basis. And they write in PYL Buzz, "Since Mr. Chernus and the Board have effectively cut us out of any process with the majority..." This also lends me to believe that it might be Marilyn Anderson, because she says "cut us out of any process." So it's quite possibly that she is Yogi Bear. But go on, going on. It says, "Let's just turn them all into any agency that we can file a complaint." Now Marilyn Anderson has turned Dr. Alex Chernus into the agencies and the program with the UCI in an attempt to get it to be stopped, but it was not. They saw through her tactic and said, you know, then there's no violation. And then it continues on here. "I encourage you to file a factual complaint or..." You know, which nobody has a factual complaint. And so she has to put in the "or," even questions as to what's going on to every agency available to us. Encourage everyone you know, and let's be heard again. They can't silence us. The actual facts are this. Enrollment is increasing for the first time in years at PYLUSD. Four hundred plus and counting to date. Zero teachers have been fired. They like to tell you that hundreds of teachers have been fired, but that's not true. One principal has not had his contract renewed. That's Jeff Giles. And that's as opposed to the 25 and 30 that I've heard on social media principals that have been fired. One, which is the lowest in years, by the way, that's not been removed or what have you. In addition, Jeff Giles, who is the only one principal, was escorted out of the Esperanza High School on his last day, which tells you that it's something a little bit more serious than just like, you know what, it's time for you to go. There's something more, because when somebody's escorted out, that means that they don't want them talking to anybody or giving anybody the stink eye or taking any files with them. And so they're escorted out so that you can make sure that they are leaving with no property of PYLUSD in hand. And additionally, 300 active applications from teachers from throughout the United States and maybe throughout the world are being processed in PYLUSD or standing by for openings in PYLUSD, which again tells you that at least the word on the streets in the school world, education world, is that PYLUSD is the place to come. And that's why we have 300 active applications. And then there is zero substantiated reports or investigations by outside organizations regarding wrongdoing by the superintendent or executive board. Instead, what we're seeing is an increase of amazing educational programming and curriculums and, you know, a new charter school and USI and enhancement for one of the online schools and homeschool programs that we have. And after-school tutoring to fentanyl awareness programs, middle school sports programs increased throughout all the middle schools in PYLUSD, outdoor science school for all elementary schools, which is a way of bringing equity into every one of the elementary schools. Only some of the schools were getting outdoor science schools and more preschools and what have you. I've gone through this list before. And so you see the contrast. You have Misty Jansen who goes up there and says, "Oh my gosh, you guys are just, you know, really doing, you're incompetent. You know, nothing's going well. You're spending money that you don't have. You guys are destroying the school district." And then you go, "Okay, then why is enrollment increasing? Why are 300, so hundreds of teachers trying to come to PYLUSD if it's on fire?" When you say 25 principals are being fired, why in fact is that not true and only one? And Misty Jansen is one of those people that gets on probably every day and says that principals are getting fired left and right at PYLUSD. We have one. And then in fact, why was he walked out? What's the real story? What's happening? Well, we don't know yet, and we can't know, because it's right now, at least it is. Unless it becomes criminal, then it will become a public information. But right now, it seems to be just a human resources issue, which they have to keep under their hats. And then if there's all these people that are trying to get investigations involved at PYLUSD, which Marilyn Anderson has, why have none of them been found to be credible and no investigations have continued? And so you yourself in the community, if you're, you know, one of those people that got caught up in Yorba Linda Moms because Bonnie Conte has kicked out everybody else that will give you the real truth and that you're only hearing the lies, you may be believing that 25 principals have been fired, that hundreds of teachers have been fired, that enrollment has gone the other direction, that teachers are fleeing and not wanting to come to the school, when in fact, it's the opposite of everything that they have said. So hopefully this part of it has been helpful. And you're asking, "So why is this? Why is this so crazy?" And it's not on the end they're trying to get you to believe. The other people are busy at work every day. They're very busy at work. And it's the retired teachers and the shills for the teachers' unions and everybody else and people that are running that are causing the chaos, because they are all run by Planned Parenthood, California Teachers Association, APL, in the NEA, which I don't have up there. And these are the four that are going to be carrying this message of chaos and disrepair of the district and a whole number of other things, that they're racist, that Leandra is an insurrectionist, that Sean Youngblood is, I don't know. I forget what the latest thing is. That he doesn't visit any of the schools. Todd Frazier is Alex Jones, what have you. All lunacy, when in fact, they are just busy at work, doing what it is they need to do to educate our kids. And what it is, it's all these people here in front of you that are causing as much disdain and causing community members that don't know any better to hate for absolutely no reason. And so you got to know that these are people that are all together in trying to destroy the progress that is being made by the current administration of the PYLUSD. Let's take a look at some of the messages that are being sent. Most of these are going to be from Misty Jansen. As a matter of fact, I think they all are. And that is for a reason. I'll share with you why in just one second. But let's just take a look at a couple of these. "There are a few white people I would like to send back to Europe." I'm just saying, "Don't be like Leandra #." I find it surprising that they are fine with broadcasting this kind of news. I don't know what they're talking about or she's talking about, but God forbid they talk about real sex education or the use of preferred pronouns. She goes on to say, "It's almost like the white parents are afraid of being the minority. I wonder why they would get that way." Hmm, is it possible because they, because of how they have treated minorities in the past? No, no, that can't be it. Again, #don'tbelikeleandra. And then you have, "To be so fragile that you can't read a pronoun. What the ever-every-loving-f are we doing to our children?" They don't care. They are burning it down, because that is all they know how to do. They will burn it to the ground and then they take their rich privileged kids to their classical academy to learn how to be rich privileged adults. So that's of course Misty Jansen. That's a picture she uses on the left. And I only put the two things here, because again, I got to make sure you know what she really looks like.
I'm trolling Yorba Linda on censor page.
Because that's what she really looks like. And I just so you don't misunderstand. That's supposedly the same person. And then over here, she says, "Any he will easily be re-elected, and a huge part of that's thanks to the GQP and their recoculus recall." Seriously, anyone who thought that was going to work needs to learn how to effing count or at least learn their colors. And so I just giving you all these, and we're going to bring them all together here, where we have Misty Jansen, Priya Shaw, Carrie Buck, Marcy Hawkins and Greg Plutko, the former superintendent, who are all in Black Lives Matter and all the hysteria that was happening in 20... This is from 2020, about how police officers were killing black men at about 100 a day and they needed dismantle and defund law enforcement. And so these are the things that Misty Jansen seems to be worried about. And you're saying, "Well, that was a while ago. Some of those are a while ago." But no, this is current. This is Priya Shaw talking about, "Happy Juneteenth. Let's reverse the CRT ban and embrace the teaching of our accurate and full shared history." There's the history. She wants us to use the made-up history. And of course, we have here, over here circled is Carrie Buck, where she's saying, "Yes, yes, let's bring CRT back." All right, so why do I share all that with you? Is because you have first, you have, you know, an example of Misty using all types of speaking points, which are all lies, to get the community to begin to question what is happening in the district when in fact, none of the things they say are actually happening. And then when somebody like Leandra Blades or Dr. Alex Chernus go and say and defend themselves, "Oh, see, he doesn't allow us to talk. Do you see how horrible he is? He's not going along with our narrative and agreeing with that there's 25 principals being fired." And then he says, "But there's not." "Oh, look how horrible you are." And you see this rule of craziness. And then you see what they really want to do, and that is they want to side with the cabal of teachers' union and Planned Parenthood, where they want to continue to bring in the CRT, this indoctrination, this idea that US history has never been taught truthfully. Now, you got to understand that hundreds of thousands of researchers and documents that are being held in these many famous museums around the United States and in Washington DC that are being archived, that have been go through, that hundreds of thousands of researchers, and there's just the history. And then you have this one person, I believe she worked at the New York Times, wrote an article saying, "That history's wrong." The history that has been collected by hundreds of thousands of professors and extremely smart people that says that George Washington was our first president, that Abraham Lincoln, you know, was instrumental in abolishing slavery, that he was a Republican, that the Democrats created the KKK, that, you know, and I can go on, that those things that we know to be true, because there's documentation, there's signed letters, there's, you know, people that have questioned, but then they always come to the same conclusion that the history has been fine. And then you have this reporter in the New York Times that says, "That's all wrong." And now everybody loses their mind and says, "Okay, let's follow this nimwit from the New York Times and say what she has to say is true. She knows better than the hundreds of thousands of researchers over the years and the actual documents that can be reviewed and looked at at any time that you want, is false. All that is a lie." Okay, let's go along with that. And let's then say that BLM, which supports CRT and really a promoter of CRT, make sure that we follow that program. And that is what the state of California is doing currently. We can see it happening today in some of the bills that are trying to be pushed through about making sure that parents don't know what's happening with their kids in school so that they can be taken and medical procedures could be done. That kind of stuff is being done. That is under the guides and guidelines, sorry, or the prompting of the BLM movement and the organization. And there's so much more. And so this is, you know, a little bit going back to 2020, when we knew from their website that BLM's tenants included CRT, defunding dismantling police, ending the nuclear family, create gender confusion, parents cut out of medical decisions regarding their children. That was essentially on the BLM website. They took it down after a couple of years, because I began to do shows on it, a number of other people began to do shows on it. Back in those days, I had thousands of people watching the shows. But because of the way that the algorithms work now, I've been shadow banned and it's harder for people to see some of this content. But many people were seeing that, "Wait a minute, that doesn't sound right. Like, end the nuclear family? Wait, we want to, what? We want to do what with police?" That some of these communities are taking out the police in its entirety and they're putting counselors in their place to respond that are unarmed? Are you crazy for doing that? And that is exactly what was going on at the time. And the results were, law enforcement was greatly affected. A lot of police departments were defunded millions and millions of dollars. And many of the older police officers began to retire. And now there is a crisis of a lack of law enforcement, police officers in many of the cities that need them the most, like Chicago and Seattle, Portland, Los Angeles, San Francisco, are all running short on police officers and money to support their training and to make sure that they have all the resources that they need. They just are not able to do the job anymore. And so what is the leading cause of death for young men? Well, if you would have believed Black Lives Matter back in those days, they were saying that police officers were the leading death, cause of death for black men. That police officers were shooting and killing them at such a rate that that was the leading cause, which would mean it would have to be 3,000 to 4... Actually, it's more than that. 5,000 men would have had to have been shot during a period of time back in those days. I think it was like within about four or five years. And you would have had to believe that, that over 5,000 black men were being shot by police. And so that's what they were telling you. None of that was true. None of that was true. We would later find out by FBI, sorry about that, FBI statistics that it was something like eight in that period of time had been shot and killed. All of them were involved in confrontations where they were aggressively attacking the police officer either with a knife or a gun or some type of other instrument or even their fist. One police officer was punched in the face that broke the orbital bone in his face, and he was blinded in one eye, and he thought he was going to die, and he had to pull out his weapon and he shot the assailant, who was a young black man. But he would have, the police officer was either going to die or the other man was going to die. And fortunately for the police officer, he was able to get his weapon out and take the life of the assailant. But those were the deaths. They were being attacked by the assailant. The police officers were protecting themselves or somebody else. And then they shot and killed the assailant. And so that was a lie. That was not the case. Black men weren't being killed at a such a level by law enforcement that it was the leading cause of death in black men. It was just a flat-out lie. So what instead happened? So what instead happened? Here's the graph that just came up. Is that you see, this is from the CDC, and the red line is murders. And then the blue line is traffic accidents. And I'll get to why that traffic accident is up there in a minute. But remember that again, prior to the yellow and black line, law enforcement was in force and was out there doing their job and the best that they could. Even then, in those days, they were still a little bit shorthanded, but not quite as they were after George Floyd. But the yellow line is COVID. And then the black line is when George Floyd was, when he died. And so that red line, Black Lives Matter becomes a big issue, and they start defunding police departments and telling cops not to do their job. They decriminalize shoplifting and auto theft and a whole bunch of other crimes. And then you see the spike in black homicides. So when law enforcement is now taken out of the picture in many of these communities, what ends up happening? More black people die, especially black young men. And there it goes. It goes from somewhere around 200 a week murders, which is still unacceptable. But when Black Lives Matter comes in the place, it jumps from 200 up to almost 400 a week and stays there until winter time, when it drops back down. And then summer comes and it goes back up again, up into the 350 murders a week. And then goes back down because of winter and then comes back up again. And it doesn't get quite back down to level all the way for two years while they were dismantling and defunding law enforcement. The blue line correlates, because again, when you defund and dismantle law enforcement, they're no longer out there pulling cars over, doing traffic enforcement. And so now you see an increase in black road deaths, where more black people die in road deaths, because again, law enforcement isn't out there enforcing the laws. And now you have an increase. So thank you, Black Lives Matter, for when you come into a time where you are very prominent, because they'd been around before that. It wasn't until George Floyd that it really began to explode. And if you didn't have a black square on your Instagram, you were racist. If you didn't, if you said black, "All lives matter", then you were erased and everybody called you a white supremacist. But in fact, what they were doing was actually causing the deaths of more black people, black men in particular, in regards to murder and traffic accidents by all of their shenanigans and what it was that they did. What is the leading cause of incarceration? That is illiteracy and fatherlessness. Illiteracy and fatherlessness. And so we're going to take a look at why illiteracy now is a factor. All right, so let's bring in an article here from The Hill. And this is from 2022, I believe. And here, the author says, "My team and I scoured the NAEP, which stands for National Assessment of Education Progress. So the NAEP data sets and found a trend that should concern every politician, indeed, every American. In California, 90% of students cannot do math or read well." And then it goes on to a bunch of other cities, like New York, 85% and 82%. 86 and 85 in Illinois, 84 and 89 in Texas, 86 and 80 in Maryland. And the only other place that's close to California is South Carolina. It's 90% in regard to math and 87% in regard to reading. And then so forth and so forth. And DC is bad too. But the thing you want to take away from this is that California is the worst. California is the worst. Why? Because of the California Teachers Association and all their minions and the other associated teachers' unions like NEA and APLE. The last paragraph is important, and it says, "That's just a sampling, but the problem isn't confined to these states nationwide. Black children overwhelmingly lack proficiency in math and reading." To use Mrs. Sears, who was the Attorney General in Virginia, I believe, says, "They are functionally illiterate, meaning that they are unable to manage daily living and employment tasks. How can our society progress if a major segment of our own cannot read?" That's incredibly important, isn't it? If you cannot read and you cannot do math, you're not going to be able to do very many jobs. You're not going to be able to work at a cash register. You're not going to be able to work at a whole number of places, obviously, because you can't read. And so you're going to have very difficult time. You can become an auto mechanic, but even again, there are going to be moments where you need to be able to read some aspect of something that you need to do as far as being an auto mechanic. And so what else are they going to do? What else can you do where you don't have to read? Well, it's quite possible you could sell drugs. You could steal cars. You can rush into something like CVS and take hundreds and hundreds of dollars worth of merchandise and then you can fence it out in the community. There's a whole number of things you can do where you don't have to read it, and that's what you resort to. And that's why criminality increases with illiteracy. And then you don't have a father at home to knock you in the head and say, "Go back to school" and knock it off. And that is why this happens. I'm going to close this screen here really quick. I want to bring up one last thing to make sure you understand where we're at on this aspect. And I make it a little bit bigger here. But this is also from the CDC. If we go up here where the URL is, you can see cdc.gov. And we're going to come back down here. And this is the cause of deaths. This is over a five-year period. In 2015, black males 15 to 19 years old, the leading cause of death is homicide, not police. And then accidents. Traffic accidents is one of the main things that happens there where people are injured. There's other types of accidents, like falling off a ladder, that kind of stuff. But the majority of these are going to be traffic accidents. What did I tell you? Coming back to my camera, what did I tell you? Was happening with law enforcement being defunded and dismantled. They were not able to arrest people for smaller crimes, which is again, part of this broken windows theory, which I won't go into. But you have to be enforcing the smaller crimes that are occurring in a community, and that will affect the larger crimes like robbery, rape and homicides. So when those things aren't happening, you're going to have an increase in homicides. And what is the leading cause of death in black males 15 to 19 years old? Homicide. The next one is the accidents. What is not happening when you have Black Lives Matter? You're not able to enforce the traffic laws, and you have an increase in traffic accidents that are occurring in a community. Where do you find the law enforcement down here? It's in number nine, Legal Intervention. And there were 10. Over a five-year period of time, there were 10 black men of the ages between 15 and 19-year-olds that were killed at the hands of law enforcement. Again, when you look into what happened, it was that the perpetrator, the black male that was 15 and 19 years old, was coming at the police officer with some type of weapon, and the officer used lethal force. It even says in the, I don't think I still have it up. Let me see if I do. Where it says what the definition is, but it talks about the legal intervention. Legal intervention of law enforcement in taking the life of an assailant. And so there's 10. That is a heck of a lot less than 1,837 and 910 that happened during that same period of time. If we go down to black males 20 to 24 years of age, just for interest, nothing changes. The same assault and homicide and accidents are number one and number two. And there's 3,786. And accidents is 1,880. And then you come down to legal intervention and it is... Hold on, let me make sure I get the right line. There you go, 23. So you have 23 as compared to 3,000. Actually, if we take both the traffic accidents, the homicides, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000, you know, or more, 5,500 or so deaths as compared to 23 in regard to law enforcement. All right, coming back to my PowerPoint here. And so do you see how you have Misty Jansen and this group of retired teachers and shills for the union and Tricia Quintero and Marilyn Anderson, who want you to believe that all kinds of madness is happening at a school that because they want to bring more education and increase education and the standard of education, that they can't stand that, that they have to bring that down. They have to, they have to have you report them to every agency available in the state of California and even federally to try to get them to stop educating the kids. They then in turn want to promote CRT and BLM and everything else that goes along with that. And that is everything that's anti-education, when in fact, what they're doing is promoting the death of more minorities. Because without education, you can see what happens, without the real history and the real facts about law enforcement, then you, then you have more deaths because then they dismantle and defund law enforcement. And it's an incredible impact on the community that they claim that they're trying to help. Understand that the teachers union is much like the pharmacy. The pharmacy cannot have healthy people. The more healthy people they have, the less money pharmacies and the pharmaceutical companies, sorry, the pharmaceutical companies make. If you have that much healthy people, then you don't need pharmaceuticals. Same thing is with the teachers unions is that they need, they need, they need a lack of education. They need, they need stats that tell them, "Oh, we need more money because, you know, if we can't get to these kids, you know, but it's going to take money to do that. To create this program over here, it's going to take money to do that." But every year, if they have a need for money, that means that more money is going to come into their coffers. We don't, I couldn't care less about teachers unions coffers and their bank account. We don't care. We want teachers to get paid an enormous amount of money to do a very good job of educating our kids. I want to give more raises to the teachers. I want the teachers to do very, very well. They should be paid equally to law enforcement officers when they're doing their job and maybe more so. Because without them teaching kids, we will not have any police officers that know how to read and write and count. And so we got to make sure that we're educating, that we don't get caught up in the idea that we need to, to worry about things that have nothing to do with education, which is everything that CRT teaches and BLM programming teaches. So who do we want instead? This is who we want. We want Ryan Miller for Area 1. We want Maria Lupita Stubbs for Area 2. Leandra Blades for Area 3. Very important that you memorize these names. These are the people we want. Of course, Leandra Blades is an incumbent and she's the president of the teachers, teachers, sorry about that, Leandra. She is the president of the school board and doing an amazing job along with Todd Frazier and Sean Youngblood. But we are going to bring in Maria Lupita Stubbs for Area 2 and Ryan Miller. And yeah, they're going to do a great job. What we don't want is we do not want these three folks. Marilyn Anderson, Misty Jansen, or Tricia Quintero. We do not want them at all in our school district. It really is important that we understand that these people are all about the negatives that I just brought to you and they do not have the, the best interests of our children and families and parents in mind as it comes to the school district. Now, again, Ryan Miller, Area 1, Maria Lupita Stubbs, Area 2, and Leandra Blades, Area 3. Make sure you get out there and vote. All right, my friends, that is it on this part two of the review for the last school board meeting. All right, my friends, that's it. Talk to you later. Take care. Bye.